Zachary Dolan, production lead at PAC TV. At PAC TV, we believe it is our responsibility to bring informational programming to residents and voters so you can make informed decisions about issues that impact your community and about candidates wishing to serve. Thank you, candidates, for participating in this forum and being committed to an open discussion, sharing your standpoint on important issues facing the town of Pembroke. I am joined tonight by Melissa Matinzi, programming manager at PAC TV. We will be acting as moderators for this forum. We are also joined by candidates for Planning Board Rebecca Coletta and Alicia Siciliano-Perry. The following format will be used in tonight's forum. Each candidate will be introduced in alphabetical order and will have two minutes to introduce themselves, share why they are running for Planning Board, and tell voters, viewers, about their qualifications for the position. Candidates will then be asked several questions related to local issues. We will alternate the first candidate to answer each question, and each will be given two minutes to respond. At the end of the forum, each candidate will have two minutes to make their closing remarks. A countdown clock in the studio is being used. We ask that the candidates respect these timelines in order to keep this forum fair and balanced. This will not be a debate. It is an opportunity for candidates to let voters know who they are and where they stand on certain issues. Thank you. Ready to begin?
Yeah.
We begin tonight with your opening remarks. Candidates, you will each have two minutes, and we will begin with candidate Coletta.
Hi, my name is Becky Coletta, and I'm a candidate for reelection to the Pembroke Planning Board. I came to the Planning Board about five years ago with a background as an attorney. I'd been an attorney for about over 20 years at that point, and I was looking for a way to serve the community. I had lived in Hanson before coming to Pembroke, and I had served in that community, both on the Community Cable Committee and on the Board of Selectmen and a number of other committees. And I really find that it is a way to give back and indeed really be a part of your community. So five years ago, I joined the Planning Board, and I learned how much I had to learn. I spent the next five years grappling with the issues that come before the Planning Board. In front of me, I have the bylaws of the town of Pembroke, which guide us through most of what we do and which I keep at every meeting. The Planning Board is a board that is very driven by the decisions of the voters and the voters in implementing the zoning bylaws. We don't have the right to do variances. That's something that's done by the Zoning Board of Appeals. And we don't have the right to sort of make up rules with regard to specific parties. But what we do do is we struggle to find a balance between the rights of the private parties who own the property, the developers who are coming in, the neighboring properties, and the community as a whole, including financial impacts of the town. After spending the last five years doing this, what I learned is that experience on the board really makes a difference. In the last couple of years, we've lost a longtime member of our board who passed away. Another member of the board had served for many years and decided not to run for reelection. And another member of our board has just been out of town on business and unable to make a lot of the meetings. So I decided to run for another term-
I'm sorry, your two minutes are up.
...to bring my experience to the next five years.
Alicia, it is now your turn. You have two minutes for opening remarks.
Thank you. My name's Alicia Siciliano-Perry. I am relatively new to the community of Pembroke. I've been in Pembroke about eight or nine years now. I am a licensed general contractor and an interior designer, so I have a custom design-build firm, which in the last 10 to 15 years that I've been in business, has taken me pretty much out of Pembroke. So most of my clients are in other towns, bringing me in front of other planning boards, zoning boards, as well as dealing with the building departments. So I'd like to take that knowledge and help it in my own community and get more involved. Instead of being on the other side of the table, I want to serve on the Planning Board so I can help out the people in my community, as well as cut through that red tape. Because sometimes I find when you're the person on the other side of the table, you do want something for your home or your business. That's where you, it's your biggest investment that you may have. So how can we cut through that red tape and help you through that process faster and help you make sure you understand it? I continually am reading zoning laws and how each town does something different. So have I been in front of the Pembroke Planning Board? No, I have not. Have I read through the zoning laws? Yes, I love it. Like, I'm kind of a little bit of dork on that aspect, where I enjoy reading it and getting to the nitty-gritty of it. So I would like to be able to continue my knowledge and continue my education in that and giving back to the community. So that is my ultimate goal here, is how can I help my community grow, move forward, and take the knowledge and my experience and move forward and help everyone else get what they need out of their business or home, and how I can help our community.
Thank you. Now move to Melissa for question one.
Thanks, Zach. The Planning Board's major responsibilities include zoning bylaws, site plan reviews, and applications for projects. How would your background and qualifications make you an effective candidate, and what skills will you contribute as a member of the Planning Board? We'll begin with Becky Coletta.
So I think I talked about that a bit in my opening statement. A lot of what I contribute at this point is the experience of five years on this Planning Board and getting to know the zoning bylaws in this town and the rules and regulations. I can tell you that it's not an easy process to get to know the inside of this. I'd been on the side of being a lawyer involved in transactions and have really felt differently as I'm on this side about how to grapple with those issues differently. The other thing I bring is real commitment to the community. There's been a lot of discussion in Pembroke lately about, do we want to grow? Do we want development? Do we want to make it easier or harder for developers to come into our town? What I have tried to do, sometimes people have agreed with me, sometimes they haven't, but what I've really struggled to do is to find that balance between the developers and the private parties and the neighbors, and try to find a solution that works for everyone. Right now, we've also tried to take the lead in cleaning up some of our bylaws. Some of our bylaws have created issues over time, and so we're trying to go back and address those issues. The Planning Board is the board in town that is responsible for proposing new bylaws, and it's responsible for acting on any bylaws that may be going before town meeting. This year, we have a number of bylaws going before town meeting, and I think my legal background has helped us to parse through the bylaws and what we want to add into them.
Thank you, Becky. Alicia, you're up next.
So I think my background being in construction and design, a lot of the times I'm on the other side, where Becky has been behind the table, I'm on the other side of that, where it's hard for people, they're spending a lot of money to get through this process, and it can be extremely frustrating, especially when they can't get the answers out of officials sometimes, or it's vague, or they're trying to read through the zoning laws. So like Rebecca said, or Becky, sorry, rather, cleaning up some of those bylaws, I feel like would be very important, because sometimes there is vague and, you know, needs to be cut and dry where, so yes, there could be special permits, but it makes it fair and equal for everyone, you know, because there are people that want that advancement and people that don't, and finding that great balance. And that's what I've done my whole career, even as an interior designer, making that balance between husband and wife, so they're not battling over what color something might be or where the dishwasher is placed. So taking that knowledge and also using that in the community, making sure that, you know, it's the right amount of things being done, the right traffic flow, how things look aesthetically. You know, unlike, I call them the matchstick mailboxes on Matiche Set that drive me crazy because they aesthetically are not attractive. And that's one of the things that motivated me to be here, because I want to take my design aesthetic as well as my construction background and really try to make our town beautiful, as well as financially responsible and help us grow as a community.
Thank you, Alicia. Zach?
There are several zoning bylaw amendments included in the warrant for town meeting. Please give your opinion on the bylaw to allow an age 55 or over cluster development at the Pembroke Country Club, and why this bylaw should or should not pass. And we'll start with candidate Siciliano-Perry.
Well, that cluster development, it is leaving, it is suggesting, I believe, over 50% of open space being left and 30-plus acres being left for the golf course. I think that it is important for us to continue to grow as a community, and currently, we don't really have a lot of 55 and over living. There is a housing shortage, and I think that's a great opportunity where it's such a nice wooded area for people of 55 and over to be able to grow old in that kind of environment. West Elm, yes, there is a concern of traffic, so I think doing traffic studies on that, but making sure that it, to move forward, I know there's been some discussion of holding it off till the next, at one point, or a month or so ago in the minutes, there was, it was mentioned about holding it off for a little while to do more studies, and I just think that would be the wrong mistake. I think moving forward for that, you know, for the community would be great, because we do need that housing. We do need more housing out there. There's definitely a housing shortage for 55 and over and first-time homebuyers.
Thank you. Becky Coletta, you now have two minutes.
So I was part of the Planning Board that developed that bylaw, and we have recommended that the town adopt the bylaw. And there's a lot of thought and reasoning that went into it. Honestly, I came to Pembroke rather than my husband's hometown, which I won't say on the air, because it was less congested than the towns closer to Boston. I like having a more rural feel. I might have even liked it if we could have bought the country club and kept it completely the way it is, or even more open space. The problem is I'm realistic about the town's finances. One of the things we've looked at over the last several years is the fact that new development is what brings money into town. And I still wouldn't have given the golf course up from just for that new revenue, but when I look at the impact of spending 4.3 million plus the bond money, plus the money to clean up the golf course, I could not justify supporting that. So then we're left with two alternatives. If the golf course can't make it, it's going to have to sell to a developer who would do single-family homes. That could be three to four bedrooms per home, let's call it 150 homes that might fit in there. That's a lot of traffic and a lot of financial impact on the town. Police, fire, advisory committee, and the school board have all stated their endorsement of this bylaw, because they think that an over-55 community that also preserves our status in terms of 40B by requiring an affordability component, which we added in, would be in the best interest of the town financially. It would bring in new growth, it would bring in tax dollars, and most importantly, it would also leave 50% open space. Our belief is that the other issues can be handled through the special permit process.
Thank you. Now move to Melissa for the next question.
Thanks, Zach. Please explain the proposed zoning bylaw amendment to create a new community center redevelopment overlay district, and why you think it's necessary. Becky, we'll start with you.
So this is a bylaw that we've actually put off acting on until the fall town meeting at the earliest. And part of the reason for that is that when we were talking through the bylaw, which was proposed by the Board of Selectmen, it became apparent that people seemed to want a little more development of the idea of what would go there. There were some elements of the bylaw that caused concern, because if you read it literally, it would say that you could have hundreds of houses on this little piece of land, and that was not really the intent. So as I understand it, the Board of Selectmen will be seeking some money right now to get a plan that's more developed, that looks at the community center, looks at a way to bring the community center, the council on aging together in that property, that possibly would include some housing, possibly be affordable housing, in the community center. I'd like to see those plans developed before I express an opinion about a specific plan. And that's what the Planning Board will be doing as the plans come in, is looking at the bylaw again and saying, how can we give the people in the town more information so that they can, so they can be informed when they decide whether to say yea or nay to this bylaw. It's, the thing about the bylaws, as opposed to a variance in the Zoning Board of Appeals, the thing about the bylaws is they have the force of law, and it's dictated by what the people in the town want. So we really need to have a plan that the people of the town can look at in conjunction with the bylaw and decide whether or not that's what they want for the centerpiece of our town center. Thank you.
Thank you, Becky. Alicia, you're next.
Well, the community center, I've had mixed reviews on, because I've been asking around in the town and wanting to see people's feedback, because I can read as much about it as I can, and, you know, how do people actually, are they receiving it? And it is a 50/50 shake on whether they want it or they don't want it. They want funding for it, they don't want 40B. So I'm still working on where I land on that, because I'd like to hear more of the sides of it, and it is, you know, it becomes very personal for people, because it is the center of our town, and what are we going to be looking at, and how, you know, how it's going to affect the overall community. So I'm looking forward to seeing some additional plans on it as well, and what their, the final proposal for that would be. But also making, so when we make those bylaw, the overlay district, that it would be helpful to the community, and making a strong, forceful law that would make it so that whatever is right and best for the community.
Thank you, Alicia. Zach?
Residents have asked if Pembroke might develop a master plan or hire a planning director to address residential and commercial development. What is your opinion on this? We will begin with Alicia.
I don't think that would be necessary. I think continuing on in the way that the town is going and having the board be able to meet regularly, having board members be there regularly to make sure that those bylaws can move forward, and making sure things are getting done in a timely fashion, and pushing things and making those changes on wording of bylaws and stuff, so they can get to that town meeting and not get pushed off till the next year, or, you know, the next half a year. So I just don't think that's necessary to bring on that role or position if we're able to make sure the board is moving forward in each, in every decision.
Thank you, Alicia. Becky, you now have two minutes.
I'm in favor of us spending some money to get an update to our master plan. Some elements of this, we've talked about in the past, we might be able to do with some Community Preservation Act money, because pieces of the master plan relate to things like open space and how we're going to use open space. So we might be able to integrate some efforts and not waste money by doing things twice. But our master plan was last done in about 2005. I have it over there, but I don't remember if it's 2004, 2005. But it's, you'd like to update and look at your master plan every 10 years. When we're talking about the community center, when we were talking about the golf course, when we're talking about development, there's a lot of opinions in town about whether we want more or less development. An update to the master plan would allow people to have those conversations in a structured way that would allow us to make some decisions moving forward as to what's consistent or not with that master plan. I don't want us to hold up any bylaws while we do it. The master plan is probably not going to change dramatically, and we still have to fix the bylaws that we live with each and every day, and we can't wait for a master plan to be updated in order to update our bylaws. But it is a useful exercise. It also sometimes will allow us to get some amount of grant money and some amount of, it helps us when we have to respond to things like 40B projects. We've adopted a housing production plan with the Planning Board. There are ways in which we can move forward with a housing production plan, with a master plan, that will help us to respond to 40B developments if they come up down the road after the 2020 some census, and will also allow us to get grants and move our community forward with a unified vision.
Thank you. Melissa?
Thanks. New housing developments are being built in Pembroke, but still, there is limited affordable housing and workforce housing. What do you see as the Planning Board's role in addressing the community's concern that young people, seniors, and people who work in Pembroke cannot afford to buy a home or live in town? Becky, you're up first.
So that's a tough one. And one of the things that we did in the cluster zoning bylaw that was not there in the bylaw that was drafted by town council was to add a specific requirement for affordable housing, so that the over-55 units would have to include at least 10% affordable units in order to get a special permit, and that would be under a legal requirement. We wouldn't be able to change that at the Planning Board. The other things we can do is try to have some friendly affordable projects. We've also put in place a housing production plan that requires us to start to look at these issues more seriously. One ideas we've tossed around have been to look at certain parts of town where maybe we change the zoning from one-acre zoning to a different level of zoning so that a developer could afford to come in and build some more affordable workforce-type housing or first-time homebuyer housing in a way that they can't do if they're spending $160,000 or $180,000 for a one-acre lot. They want to build a big house. They want to build a four- or five-bedroom house, at least three bedrooms. They don't want to build a small, affordable home, given how much they're paying for land in our town. So we're looking at other ways that we could adjust our zoning bylaws to give us opportunities to build some affordable housing down the road.
Thank you, Becky. Alicia, it's your turn.
Thank you. So this is an issue that, to me, is near and dear to my heart, because I, recently at the Legislative Breakfast, I had this conversation with a couple of the state representatives and the senator, because it is really difficult for young people to get out there with their college loans and the over-55 community to be able to afford to stay in town. And we don't want our young people, I have older children that, I don't want them to move to New Hampshire or Maine and have to go visit my grandkids someday up there, because they can't afford to buy a home here in Massachusetts. So I was talking with the state representatives and trying to come up with ways that, above just our town level, is how can we find incentives for builders and developers to do programs that can, you know, maybe it is changing zoning, so it is more affordable, because that acre law is costing somebody so much money, they can't afford to build a home, because our, the rate that we're paying for labor in Massachusetts is so high, rather than in other parts of the country. So finding a way, whether it's through the zoning laws, is something that is where I would, haven't come up with the answer yet, I won't say that I have, but trying to find something to make that answer there for us, because it is so important to all of us. Because no, it, between cellphone bills, cable, all of the, you know, car costs, who can afford to start out with, in their $200,000 in student loans and then buy a house for a half a million dollars, for a starter home? So we just need to have realistic goals and come up, devise a way through the Planning Board, state town officials, and through the state, in coming up with a way to make sure that happens.
Thank you, Alicia. Zach?
When assessing projects that are brought before the Planning Board for approval, how will you, as a member of the Planning Board, weigh the impact of the project to the town? We'll start with Alicia.
Well, that I live in town, and I've seen some projects in the past where I've not necessarily questioned, I just didn't quite understand what our overall point was. So I think evaluating it from being a contractor as well, and I understand people are submitting these projects, some to make money, some are doing it because it's their own home or business. So trying to look at it from all the angles and how it will affect the community and what it will bring into the community. Because some people might not want to bring in, you know, that additional revenue, whatever it may be, but at the same time, they don't want to raise their tax rate because of, we can't afford, you know, for the amount of children we have in the school. So it kind of can help balance us out, but it has to be done in the right kind of infrastructure so we don't, you know, lose out on things that are important to everyone in the town.
Thank you. Becky, you now have two minutes.
So when I look at the impact to the town, and this is something that I've sort of grappled with over time and tried to refine my views on, but, I mean, frequently, we look, we're trying to balance impact on congestion overall, town roads, traffic, things like that. We're also looking at the impact on the directly abutting neighbors. We've tried each time to lessen that impact when there's new development. Neighbors haven't always been happy with the ways in which we've been able to reduce that impact, but that's been a goal of ours. The other goal would be to look at the community as a whole. I mean, we have an obligation to the abutters, but we also have an obligation to the community as a whole to try to effectuate our master plan to the extent it still exists, to try to build the type of housing that our community needs, and the type of businesses that our community needs, the type of development that our community needs. I grew up in New Orleans, where, you know, a lot of the development in my lifetime was not all that planful. And it ended up, when I came to the Northeast, I really appreciated the amount of planning and the amount of space that is here in Pembroke. And part of that is because we're on Title V systems as opposed to septic systems. And so we have a lot of space here, and I really do try to preserve that where I can. And then the final thing is the tax impact. When we look at proposals, we say, okay, is this a proposal that is going to have a huge tax impact on the town, and is there a way that we can improve that impact? For example, with the cluster housing, having school-aged children in single-family houses is going to have a negative tax impact on the town, whereas over-55 housing, everyone agrees, will probably have a positive tax impact.
Thank you. Melissa?
Thanks. What do you think are the biggest challenges that the town of Pembroke faces? We'll begin with Becky.
Well, congestion and this difference in viewpoint as to whether we want to develop more or less, the struggle between development brings in new tax dollars and open space doesn't bring in tax dollars, but we love our open space and we love the rural nature of our town, and how do we balance that? How do we find places in town where we can have development? One of the things the Planning Board has tried to do over time, we actually changed the zoning bylaws in the industrial districts to try to allow those to be more developed, yes, I'm going to say it, more developed, make it so that there were fewer variances required, and encourage businesses to go into the industrial district and build some commercial development that could be beneficial to the town's bottom line and beneficial to creating a center of commerce and creating value in the land without having as much red tape, without having the need to go to ZBA and back to Planning Board and not be able to market that property. So to the extent we find those parts of town where we want business development, we can really make that easier for developers to come in and put something valuable to the town there. In areas that are residential or rural, we can try to preserve that character as much as possible. But I see that as a big issue, because it impacts the bottom line, and if you were to talk to anyone outside of the Planning Board, money, that's probably the biggest issue. And what I'm talking about are the ways in which the Planning Board contributes to the financial impact of development on the town.
Thank you. Alicia, you now have two minutes.
Well, I guess the congestion issue in the industrial area is something that is the only part of town where I feel like there is congestion, and I know other people might not see it that way, but I'm on the road a lot. So when I get to Pembroke, I feel like, oh, roads are great, like, there's tons of open space, and, you know, it is easy to move around. Certain times of the day, okay, there might be that little extra traffic, but in that industrial area, it is really, because all of those businesses being packed in there, has its benefits, but it also has its drawbacks. I know personally, I try to avoid that area at all costs, because it's just too time-consuming. I would rather kind of spread out that just a little bit to be able to get around the town a little bit easier, because now we've made that densely populated congestion area, and we still have tons of rural space. But how can we just have rural space and then have this really densely populated industrial space and not where you're causing traffic problems and making it hard to get through and around the town? I know when my kids were teenagers, I didn't even want them to drive through that area, because it would make me nervous, depending on the time of the day, whether they could get through there. And there's no other part of town that I feel like gets that congestion on a daily basis. So that is one of the things that I would try to work on.
Thank you. Zach?
We now want to give you the opportunity to either speak about a topic that has not been addressed, or expand on questions or comments that were addressed earlier in the forum. Again, this is not a debate. You'll have two minutes. We'll start with Alicia.
The overall, I know we have the septic systems here in the town. Well, for the country club, the cluster zoning is, you know, making sure that that is addressed is one of the things that I would like to, you know, make sure that we're addressing for how they can treat that many septic systems and how, whether it has to be leaching fields or whatever it is to come up with that kind of infrastructure to ensure that it, it doesn't pollute any of the area around or cause an odor smell or anything damaging to the surrounding neighbors. And that's something that is my biggest concern about that, even though everything else about that community I find to be, you know, very- that community I find to be, you know, very, and, I'm sorry, I can't think of the right word, very, very good for the town all over. So that would be the only thing that I can really think about at the moment, and then just the, the over-55 and first-time homebuyers, and trying to really develop something for them, and, you know, making sure that we can keep our families in town, whether it's adding, making it easier to, in the zoning, to add in-law apartments, you know, where our kids that come home from college can, like, rent from us, or my, you know, elderly parents can come and stay with us, and that I can build, add that in-law apartment on in a lot more ease, and not have to go for an argument, or a special permit, or a variance, or whatever it may be, depending on the zoning. But that's something that I think is, that's really popular right now, and that I think is something that, as people struggle with the amount of money in Massachusetts, it's going to continue to be a coming problem.
Thank you. Becky, you now have two minutes.
So one of the things that I would point out is that town meeting is coming up, and there are bylaws that are there that are not just the big ones. For example, there's a bylaw that would make it easier for the building inspector to issue certain variances without it having to go to a ZBA hearing. And the key is whether or not it would increase the amount of nonconformity. So example, if somebody wanted, is in a nonconforming lot and wanted to build a shed, that wouldn't increase the nonconforming nature of the lot, the building inspector could sign off on that without the homeowner having to go through the whole ZBA process. So that's one of the bylaws that's out there. You might like it, you may not, but this is the chance for everyone to vote on the bylaws, and then have the town try to respect that. The other thing is, there are things that the planning board doesn't have anything to do with. For example, we have limited legal authority to affect aesthetics outside of the Center Protection District. We're not given that authority. Maybe we want it, but it's difficult to get. And the other thing that we don't do is issue variances. There have been a lot of complaints about some of the congestion right in the town center, and about what that town center and the Center Protection District should do. Some of the congestion really was because those projects went before the zoning board of appeal and got variances. And someone said they needed variances because the zoning bylaws were too strict. But I think the planning board, we've started a dialogue, and I think the planning board and the ZBA need to get together, and maybe this is part of a master plan, and talk about how much density and how much commercial space we want to develop in the center of town, so that we have an ability to make smart decisions together.
Thank you. Candidates, we are now going to give you two minutes for closing remarks. Feel free to speak directly to your camera to address your voters and constituents. Becky, we'll start with you.
So I'm really looking to continue to serve the town on the planning board. I've spent the last five years doing this, gathering a lot of information and knowledge. At one point, I actually thought, do I want my Monday nights back? And I looked at the board as it's currently constituted, and I realized that I can still contribute, I can still bring some perspective, I can still bring some experience. I bring a lot of heart, I bring a lot of caring, and I bring a lot of experience. I have both a real estate brokerage and a law firm in Hanson, and I've worked on town issues ever since I moved to Hanson in 2003, and then moved to Pembroke in 2007. And I want to continue to do that, and to serve the town, and I'm always here to listen, and to see if we can make good decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Alicia, you now have two minutes for closing remarks.
Thank you. So I am hoping that you'll come out and vote for me, because I'm really looking forward to helping out my community. I know I'm relatively new in my town here, Pembroke, even though it's been nine years. So I want to be able to feel like I'm contributing something back to my community, rather than just building homes in other towns and getting to know other people. I've learned so much in the last 20 years of being in business, between design aesthetics, how things look for the town, and, you know, being on that other side. I want to help you all cut through that red tape, get to the meat and potatoes of what you're asking for, and make sure you really understand what you're asking, and what we're asking of you, so you don't waste your money and your time, because that's very valuable, and making sure we have a beautiful town that we can all grow old in, and raise our children, and be able to grow old. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to both candidates for participating in this forum. For our viewers, thank you for joining us. If you're interested in watching replays of this forum, please visit our website, pacTV.org/pembrokeelection, for replay times on the Pembroke Government Channel, and to watch the forum on YouTube. For Melissa, myself, the candidates, and all of us at PAC TV, thank you for taking the time to join us to learn more about your candidates. And please, ensure your voice is heard. Cast your vote on Saturday, May 18.